We call this meeting to order.
Okay.
At 7 o'clock on Tuesday, September 17th. We will start with our Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
It's gonna be a relatively quick meeting. So, the meeting in the month of August was canceled due to no agenda items. So, if we could, we will get a motion to approve tonight's agenda as well as the meeting minutes from July 16th, 2024.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda for September 17th, 2024, and the minutes from July 16th, 2024.
Thank you, Tina.
I'll second it.
Motion second, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Here. Being that there's not a whole lot on here, we can start with any citizen comments on any topics other than the amendment.
Sure. You wanna talk about money?
Can we get some back? Alright. Nick has nothing to bring. We'll move on to unfinished business. There is no unfinished business for this month. So, we'll move on to new business. We do have an agenda item here for new business tonight. Update to the large-scale utility energy facilities, which I will let Ms. Karen LeBeere take the floor on this topic, please.
So, in your packet, you should have a copy of the compatible renewable energy zoning ordinance that the MTA has created as a sample for communities to adopt. I believe at the last township board meeting, it was decided that the township would adopt a compatible ordinance for large-scale solar and for battery storage. I think the board did not want to pursue the adoption of a compatible wind ordinance because the odds of one being built here in Casco just based on the environment and the wind that comes through this area is probably very unlikely. So, and that's okay. You can have a CREEO that adapts parts but not all the entities. So, you can adapt just wind, you can adapt just solar, you can adapt just battery storage, you can adapt two, or you can adapt all three. So, it sounds like the township has said they want to explore adopting two. So, the sample that you've got includes all the language for both wind, battery storage, and solar. I have basically what the amendment would look like if the township would just focus on solar and battery storage. And it's just basically those sections from the MTA sample. There is another CREEO sample that is out there that has been published by U of M. I've looked at it, it's the same spirit as MTA 1. And so, I don't see any conflict with what MTA is currently circulating in this example. This would not affect the small and medium-scale solar ordinances that you guys already have in the books. I would recommend still keeping your large-scale solar ordinance, just modifying it to have it known that it's for any facility that's on five acres or more but is producing less than the 50 megawatts that's required by the utility scale one. And then also for your current wind ordinance, the languages for commercial wind energy conversion systems, I think we just need to add language to that to also indicate that that would just apply to anything that's under 50 megawatts as well.
So, do you think that we would ever get any kind of wind?
Probably not. I think it's a lot harder to... If a wind... I mean, the infrastructure for these wind turbines is incredibly expensive. And so, they wanna make sure if they're putting them up somewhere, it's in... You know, there are certain areas that they call a wind belt. Michigan typically is not one of them except around the thumb. So, for this area of St. Pierre County, I think it's highly unlikely that it would be a productive wind energy system, at least with the town that they got right now.
But the battery storage would be something feasible for this area?
The township board said that they would like to consider that.
Can you give us some... Maybe I'm the only one that doesn't know maybe that. A little more understanding of the battery storage, how that works. It's storing power from where? Solar panels?
Solar panels, the wind. There might be maybe some other current utility resource that is able to send their power to the storage and hold it. And, you know, it would get released however they release it. But it's more of just kind of like just holding the energy for the time and then dispersing it through the system.
So, what does one of these facilities look like? I mean, just a building warehouse-type structure or...
Yes.
So, this one... This is what's existing on our books currently. The Commercial Wind Energy Conversion System.
Yeah, Commercial Wind.
This is what's...
Yeah. I'd say pages 178 all the way to, I think, 91.
91 or 92.
91. That covers your wind and all the small, medium, and solar... Or the small, medium, and large solar energy systems that you already have.
Okay. And then this would be in addition to this?
This would be in addition. I would say, right now, your current wind and all your solar stuff is under the general provisions section of the zoning ordinance. I would say this would just be another... The adoption of any utility... Of a utility CREEO, I would say we would probably just adopt it. And I would recommend adopting it as the latest section. So, it would be section 94. And it would include your utility-scale solar of 50 megawatts or more and the battery storage.
And it wouldn't rewrite any of this?
What else? We would probably just modify noting that the large-scale that you guys currently have is for stuff under 50 megawatts, so it's not confused with the utility scale. And also the same thing for the wind. This would be for facilities under 50. Because in theory, if a wind... If the township doesn't wanna adopt a wind CREEO, you can still regulate stuff that's under that 50-megawatt utility scale.
Even a small-scale tower, how tall is one? Like, would it even fit on five acres? And no matter how I did the math, I couldn't fit one on five acres. Because I have to be like three times away from the edges, 500 feet from a house. It was like... But that's not... We're not even... That's not what we're working on.
No. And like I said, the odds of something like that probably happening here is very, very slim.
What's it do for us? Does this help? If somebody wants to come in, we can regulate them? Is that what it does?
If someone wanted to have a utility-scale system, they would actually... They would come to the township for the review as opposed to the state. If we don't adopt anything, they can automatically go to the state.
Alright.
If they were to do that...
So, what happens with wind then? So, they... We just get bypassed, they go to the state?
In theory, they would go to the state.
Well, you wanna control that too?
They...
Why are you allowing them to go to the state? Why is the board letting them go to the state?
I think the thinking was that the odds of ever getting one down here is very slim.
Well, you know how that works. It's still gonna happen. At least you got control, right?
Is it that much harder to add wind? I mean, if we're already doing solar and battery watts, adding one too?
You guys could.
You know, if that's what we're worried about, going to the state and us losing control, I think you wanna control everything.
What's the disadvantage of doing all three?
To be honest, I don't think there's really any disadvantage. I think the thinking was the odds of this area getting... You know, in general, we don't like to add language for stuff that's never gonna come up. So, I think the thinking was that the odds of ever getting a utility-scale wind down here, knowing that we just don't have the environment for that, is probably just not gonna happen. So, we would just have an ordinance sitting there that's probably is never gonna get touched. But, like we say, you know, if the technology changes and suddenly it would be viable, then... I mean, that is something to think about.
Then we could change it at that time.
We could.
Still could have somebody come in in the meantime before then, and then it'd go right to the state, right?
You could.
So, Karen, Public Act 233. We have to have something in place by November 29th. Is that correct? So, that means it has to go through this board and also get approved by the township before that date.
Right. The township board would have to approve it before that date.
The other thing that's always bothered me on this matter, and maybe again, it's just me. But we... For instance, the large solar and/or wind in Ag. You know, it was always my assumption that we were trying to keep as much open space as we could in our township. We know there's gonna be residential, we know there's gonna be homes. All that's gonna happen. But what I'm... What bothers me to some degree is that it's permitted in the Ag, the largest permitted in the Ag, over five acres. I see, to me, that large solar and/or wind farm should be industrial zoning. But that's just me. So, I throw that out. I throw that out to see what my cohorts think about that. Is it something we should be looking at or...
Well, right now, large is special land use in Ag.
We've gotta have a special land use, right?
Yeah, special land use, right.
So, they would come before the planning commission if they wanted to do that in Ag?
Right. If it was large-scale, less than 50 megawatts.
Okay.
They would have to... That's a special land use in Ag, B1, ROS, and OS. It's only a principal permitted use in industrial. They still have to come from the planning commission either way. But there's the extra layer of the special land use for those three districts.
And I understand it. It's just, in one aspect, we work... I think we try to work real hard to keep our open Ag property.
Right.
And, oh, by the way, we're saying, "You've got a chance to come in with this large-scale home." That concerns me a little bit. So, I... And I throw it out on the table.
So, you made the comment that large-scale, but less than...
50 megawatts.
So, what if it's large-scale over 50 megawatts?
Then that falls into that, basically, the utility-scale one, which would follow the CREEO.
The other thing, Karen, that I always had a problem with, I guess, is just solar on residential homes. On top of houses, on top of roofs. It was always my understanding, every roofing contractor I ever dealt with or contractor... If you put a hole in his roof, you just bought it. And I very rarely see anything document to that effect. Is that a tourism project or no?
Yeah. Excuse me, if I could. We had the small facility, the home. That is administratively done by the building officials, inspectors. So... So, now, our building inspector would inspect those. Anything larger than medium or large use, that would be this.
Joe, I get it. But somewhere, you gotta put a hole in the roof. And I... I don't understand that. And if you put a hole in the roof, at least the roofing subcontractors I've dealt with, thanks a lot. You just took away your warranty.
Yeah, but maybe the solar people take that warranty maybe out of the... I see them around here, but...
Oh, I know. I don't think people are aware of the hole.
No.
That's what I think, too.
Well, they have to be aware of it. Why... Aren't they made to be aware of it when they do it?
Salesperson's not gonna tell you.
It depends on the contract, selling the panel, solar panels.
That's true. Why would they tell you?
And I don't know. I mean, maybe technology's changed and they have a good way to do it. I mean, you got a million outlets that come through your roof, you know, your stink pipe, your exhaust pipes, all those kinds of things. Maybe they figured...
Boots, we got everything designed for that.
Right. And so, I mean, I would have to believe that as technology continues to advance, somebody's found a way to safely mount a panel on a roof without damaging it. Or... I don't. I really don't. Not in that industry. But I can't imagine these guys are just out there avoiding everybody's warranty, and everybody's okay with the thought of capturing a couple sunrises.
Well, should the township bring it up? Should we have it somewhere? And if they come in for some type of permit for solar, that they investigate this with their roofing subcontractor and/or their general contractor?
That wouldn't be a bad idea.
Is that any of our business? What's going on?
Yeah.
I think it might be a bit of a reach to dictate...
I would think that's a discussion you have with our building official on something like that.
Okay.
Think if a resident is really interested in solar and they really believe in solar, that's their... That's their choice. And they're gonna follow that path because they probably believe in it. Some people do, some people don't. I think it all depends on... I'm sure it's probably more advisable to put it in a field if you've got a field. And I know some people that have them that work well. The kennel on homes used to... She loved having her solar and fueling the kennel and everything. Can't put any of the kennels over there. But if somebody feels it, they're gonna go with it. You know, what we say.
I do like the idea of doing it industrial. Would we have to change the writing or change the...
We can't... We can't be more restrictive than what the state is telling people they can do if you're truly adapting a CREEO.
So, you can't put it as if we wanted it in...
Only in industrial, we could say that.
And then you'd have to get a...
I mean, we could. But then we would be... The township could say only in industrial, and then we wouldn't basically be considered having a compatible ordinance. And therefore, they would... They could bypass us and just go right to the state.
Well, the other thing to do, when you think about that, is we have a very small industrial district to begin with. And if that's where the only place where these guys can do that, I don't know that. That'd be the best thing for the township.
I agree, though. I did the record all the Ag around here, though.
Yeah. Oh, I agree with you there, too.
And I better keep it industrial. It's more industrial than it is Ag, correct? That's why I better keep it there.
I agree. But my opinion is the industrial district could be better utilized than...
Well, I agree with you.
With solar farms, you know what I mean? And if that's the only place that's...
Well, you're not... You never got to stack at the solar farm, so... But if I had it there, then sit them right over here. I can guarantee that part, yeah.
So, the only way to adopt this is as the state presents it? In its lowest level?
Yeah. It has to...
It would be less, but not more.
Yeah. It can't be more restrictive than the state's requirements. And so, the sample that MTA has provided meets that. And I don't wanna fiddle with it too much in fear that it would be misinterpreted as being more restrictive. Because I don't defeat the purpose of having that in.
And that's what this is. This is what the MTA is providing guidelines.
Yep. And that includes all three. So, wind, solar, and battery.
So, basically, our answer, I mean, we really can't be much worse than that.
We would just be adapting this? It would become part of our planning?
Yeah.
Yeah.
As is, as written? It's not like we'd be adding each line.
We'd be adding definitions to define, you know, some of the jargon in here. So, we'd be adding definitions to the definitions section of the zoning ordinance. I would say we'd be adding this as a section to our current general provisions. It's like Article 14 in our zoning ordinance. And then modifying our large-scale solar ordinance to just make it know this is for stuff that's not utility scale. So, under 50 megawatts. And then your current wind, I would say, indicating that your current ordinance is also applies to items that are under 50 megawatts.
So, 50 megawatts is kind of where they determine that you go from homeowner trying to save money on your power bill to an industrial, like a DTE solar farm?
It's gotta be at least 50 megawatts or more.
See, I used to industrial.
Yeah.
Somebody had to be in that way.
Well, the only thing, you know, you have to also remember that one of the biggest, the biggest property owner...
Correct.
With that...
With the township.
The biggest property owner in Casco Township is Consumer Power.
They are the biggest property owner.
And with what we're looking at here, probably put it on a property that way?
Yeah. That's gonna be industrial.
How big does that have to be? I mean, if they put an industrial one, does that lot gotta be 40 acres? It gotta be 100 acres? Should that gotta be?
It's gotta be big.
Well, that doesn't tell me anything.
Well, 100-megawatt storage containers on the size of a shipping container. The batteries.
Size of what?
The batteries for 100-megawatt storage for batteries is the size of a shipping container. So...
If I may interject.
And how many panels could be?
The vast majority of Consumer Power's land lies within the Ag zoning. Some in the R2 and a little bit in the R1. But the majority of it in the Ag zoning. And they have express interest. They're an energy producer, okay? And they have express interest in putting solar on their property.
For more energy.
So, it's a little bit different twist than a lot of other township for your having homeowners. Although, we had a couple of homeowners hiding leases. I'm not sure what came of it.
But if Consumer Energy really wanted to put solar on their power, on their property, the way the state is situated, would we even have the ability or the financial ability to fight that? Do you... I mean, isn't the state... Like, they would be... Sure, maybe you could fight it with a corporation, a smaller company wanting to put in a small farm. But if Consumer Power wanted, would we even have the...
Well, I don't think we would even have grounds to stand on to fight that. I mean, the state has made it permissible, right?
Yep.
So, you're... I mean, not only are you fighting consumers, you're fighting the state, and it's totally to do it. So, it's a lose-lose situation.
So, we would have to lose, and we could...
So, what's the use of adopting this then?
I think this, if, currently in my mind, but this is more to regulate homeowners trying to do this on their own personal property?
No. You... If you adopt this, then you are a part of the review process for the utility scale. For the utility-scale facility. If you choose not to adopt it, they just go right to the state. A review happens there. Here, the, you know, the community is, I'd say, hopefully, more in the loop of what's going on. They're a part of the review process. You know, administratively, we're still doing... Participating in the review. Whereas if they just went to the state, we just wouldn't be involved anymore.
Is there... Are there people still at the state level? Are there still people fighting the control going back to us? Is that still...
There was a reference, I don't think they got... There was a signature reference, and I don't think they were able to get...
Yeah, I remember it, Lythir, but I remember we talked about it, but I never went anywhere.
Our governor.
So, 1 megawatt is about five acres of solar field to create 1 megawatt. And so, what do they want?
50?
Well, no. So, to create 50 megawatts, you need...
239,400 solar panels to make 50 megawatts.
So, you need five acres, five acres to create 1 megawatt?
239,000 panels.
So, five acres, you need 250 acres?
50 acres to create...
250 acres to create 50 megawatts?
About at least 250 acres plus.
So, pretty much all of Consumer's property right there?
But again, that's large-scale utility-scale farms. I... And I know Consumer's a potential to do this. But I think it's more likely that if this idea catches on that you're gonna have more homeowners wanting to do it on their property. You know, 10 panels here, 20 panels there, that type of thing.
Just for their own personal use.
Right.
But that's the extent.
It's expensive. I looked into it for my house, and I need two solar followers to do my house. And that's about $85,000.
What are the flowers?
The solar flowers, the ones that move with the sun?
Oh, okay. So, not the fixed panels on the house?
They actually create more power than the panels because they follow the sun from sunrise to sunset.
Right.
But they're crazy expensive.
For two.
For two of them. I need two of them to run my house.
So, basically, what was your... What's your break-even point? 10 years, 20 years, 30 years?
Probably 50. Like, not worth it.
Wow.
Which, well, you do a kid for America.
Yeah, I just started my stuff. My house is hard to handle at the time, so...
So, what's our next steps here, Karen? I mean, I know a lot of this is controlled by the state.
Yeah, we're...
Because we're basically inserting like a stopgap. Because they're gonna pretty much have the ability to do it anyways. This just gives us the ability to say, "Maybe don't do that. Maybe move it a little bit further over." However, our...
The only thoughtful and...
This is happening for...
To at least be involved in the process of what they are going to do.
Yeah. The township would be involved, be able to, you know, put the review fees, stuff like that. So, yeah. The township would be involved in that. I'd say the township would be able to also let, you know, do public notice, let the residents know as they typically would in the community process for most of these things.
So, would it be your recommendation that we make a motion to adopt this?
If you wanna adopt it... Or I would say if you wanted to adopt it as... If your adoptable's in front of you, that would be all three, including wind.
I don't see if it's already written and it has wind. Why wouldn't we just go that extra step and have it there in case they develop some little windy one that all of a sudden is gonna develop?
You could. I mean, you guys are the recommended by for this. I... It's just you could still have a CREEO without the wind. And so, I think the thinking was, you got to us getting winds or...
Or slim.
Or slim. So, we'll just focus on solar and battery because that's probably the more likely what the township would get. But if you guys would recommend including wind, you guys could.
Because it's already in here.
And the bad wind.
I think it's already written, and I don't... It wouldn't surprise me to see, as technology continues to advance, for smaller-scale wind turbines to be introduced to the market and then we at least have that covered.
Yep.
I mean, if you drive around, there are existing homes that have windmills now. I mean, and, you know, they might just be turning a pump to area of...
I haven't seen it before, but, you know, they're doing that.
Probably forgot to grease the bearings.
Chairman?
Yes, I have a question, planner. It has to be adopted, okay, by November 28th. Isn't... If it's not adopted by November 28th, is there some sort of penalty? Does the...
I don't believe so. I think just that's when the clock starts ticking. If someone were to come in and didn't have one, they could go directly to the state because you didn't have anything on your...
Got it. Okay.
I think you are able to adopt... I mean, I'll double-check. And but I'm pretty, from what I've gathered from all the FAQs and info that they've had out, you can... You can adopt one at a later time. But if someone had applied before you adopted it, then...
But a township should make an effort to get it done.
I'd say township should make an effort. And, you know, once it... The board adopts it, they can have language where it's adapted immediately. I know sometimes some communities say 30 days, you know, 14 days. But they could choose to adapt it immediately. So, if something were to come in, you know, be right on time.
Okay. Thank you.
Well, our suggestion is if the planning commission would like to recommend adapting the CREEO that was provided by that... that was provided by that sample through MTA to move it forward to the next board meeting, or would you like to have a review of basically this with Casco inserted in all those blanks for the next meeting? And then if, or if not, if you want to adopt this now, or recommend to adopt it, so the board can take a look at it and make the final approval. At the very least, at the next planning commission meeting, you would have to review amending the, your current wind and your large scale solar to make that distinction that this is not the utility scale. That would apply to utility scale that are solar.
So we would be basically making a motion to accept, adopt this as it is?
Or recommend an adoption.
Recommend an adoption with the board completing the blanks, which are just the Casco and the whatever word you would use to describe them.
What is the board meeting next?
8th of October. I have a one question. Do we need to have a public hearing on this?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, we have to worry about the publication date. So it would have to be at the, the next, the later October meeting then.
Okay. And you have a public hearing, and then the board could adopt in November?
Yes.
So we really can't do anything until there's a public meeting?
We can, we can recommend this.
Directly recommend the adoption, the board-
The public hearing comes from the board, not from us.
Right, the, the board would have to make a motion to set a public-
Well, I thought the planning commission would set a public hearing here. I mean-
Okay.
Yeah.
Because the board won't, by the time that happens.
Right.
Right, right, okay. So it would be at the October meeting?
Yeah.
So then we, yeah, we'd have to get the, we'd have to get in the paper by tomorrow, which is fine.
He would make a motion recommending the adoption of this, and then you would also set a public hearing date for the next planning commission meeting.
Susan, you have anything else on this?
No, I'm good.
Mike?
15th of October.
I'm good.
You guys?
Nope.
Oh, I've said my piece.
Dan?
Good.
Jim?
Just waiting to hang it.
Well? Oh, Susan, I have a reason to postpone this. I mean, I think it's in your labor. I think we're, we're pretty much ready to let it sit. Here's what it is. I, I gotta be involved in trying to take the stand and not, not be involved.
That's really, that's really weird.
And this is what most communities doing.
I'll make the motion to-
Gina, Gina, hold on one second.
Oh.
What are most communities doing? I just, based on your body language, I'm curious now.
A lot of communities are trying to figure out what they do want to do. I, there are some communities who did decide to apply a mor, in a, in a moratorium. Some communities are looking at tweaking their current language a little bit, but not quite meeting what the Creo is in hopes of maybe, well, our review's going to be a lot speedier than the state's, so maybe they'll be okay with what we're doing. The bottom line is none of that's really admissible in court at the end of the day. It's language that you can't really enforce.
Okay.
So I, I recommend going, if, if you, if a community wants to be involved in the process, then the Creo is their problem.
Thank you.
No, but I'm sorry. You'd recommend a public hearing tonight, and if all goes well, then at your October meeting, you might could recommend it to adopt it?
Yes.
For the board to adopt it at November 4.
So, so today?
You said a public hearing.
Said a public hearing.
Make a motion to set a public hearing date for October 15.
15, yeah.
15.
Okay.
They're done on the same day.
Board has to be there.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to set a, a public hearing for October 15 on this renewable energy zoning ordinance.
A second, ma'am.
A motion and a second. All in favor? Simplify the saying, aye?
Aye.
I have all opposed. Carrie?
So we have to get this in the paper tomorrow? And you would tell the right people to do that?
Yeah, we would bring that in, that you did.
Because you're the only one who's going to be here tomorrow.
I, I, I have to write another, we got a site plan that just came in that's going to be in October. That's a public hearing as well. So I have, I'm, I'm writing the public hearing language for that. So I'll just do the same for that.
Okay. And you'll get what, Brenda?
Yes.
Okay.
That's the one for Mark's office?
Yes.
Okay, so that closes the new business for tonight. The next item on the agenda is the master plan five year update. Start that with any citizens wishing to address the board in regards to the master plan five year update.
Yeah. So I hope, if you've been looking over or any people you know are looking over the master plan, just have, you can either forward the points to me, I'll get them to Steve Cassin, or you, if you can directly send to Steve Cassin. He will be at our October 8 board meeting to answer any questions that the community may have in relation to the master plan.
So once his master plan's adopted later this year, will we take this off? Or will be, at that point, we'll be able to take this off the agenda?
Yep.
And it'll be, Sean, partners, the recommendation portion of it, well, as the planning commission will start working on some of those.
Anything from your side on the master plan update?
No.
Thank you. That's everything for master plan five year update. The commission comments. Gina, anything from the board?
No.
I did have something, just sort of a note. I have a note, I'm going to say this. I love being on planning commission, but my attendance is not great. I'm well aware of that with my travel school work. And there's nothing I can do about it. I want to stay on the board and I would try, but I do fully understand if the board feels they need to get somebody that can make more meetings any year than I could. So we don't have a situation on our board like the zoning where they have an alternate. I don't hope that's even possible. But if the board as a group feels that they need somebody that can commit, or they in time find that person, I understand that. I just want you guys to know that. I will try as best as I can, but I know, like, I'm sure I missed, and it's just life as well as. And there's no way to zoom in because we're not to that level yet. But I would if I could. But just so keep that, you know.
I appreciate the-
Your apology.
It's more like if somebody comes and they, you know, and they, they want, they're begging to be on, I understand. I enjoy it, I'll still be a part of it, and I hope to still be a part of it. But I don't want to also weigh you guys down by not having any meetings.
Well, Susan, my, my opinion is that it hasn't presented itself to be an issue. We haven't run into scenarios where we have, we've had a forum, I think, other than one time when I had to recuse myself. So that's kind of a unique situation. We'll monitor it and if it becomes an issue or-
I definitely just want you to know that I'm willing that I will, will work it out, whatever needs to be done. Because I'm not what's best for the planning commission, not what's best for me or anybody else.
But at the same time, you do, you do give a lot of input.
Yeah, but if I'm not caring about what's important, I, I do understand. I just want everybody to know I do want to think. I don't want anybody to think that I'm just willy-nilly about it. And I don't think it's an important thing.
I think you bring a valuable insight and a different perspective, as we all do. And at this point, I don't see a reason why to change.
Sure, we'll see.
Jim, anything from ZBA?
I missed it last meeting, ZBA, when they, what?
You guys actually have something on the 19th, they have something.
Right.
Yeah, we have something coming up.
Right, they had, they, they had a resident in the corner of Cuddy Cut in Palms, because of setbacks, they gave him the variance to build his own garage. And two nights from now, there'll be an individual in the area road asking for relief on setbacks because just how it's-
It's a really weird place.
Yeah, it's really strange. It's right near where the, the lane drops off down to Bell River and that, so.
Okay, thank you. Anything else from anybody else? With nothing else, I call this meeting to adjournment at 7:40. Next planning commission meeting will be held on Tuesday, October 15, 2024, at 7:00 PM here at Township Office. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen.
You have to take a vote down if you're going to meet.
Did I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
Oh, yeah, motion to adjourn the meeting.
All in favor? All opposed?
Carrie?
Thank you.
Nobody wants to say here?